Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The Detroit City Council Evening Community Meeting will come to order and if the clerk will call the roll.
House Member Ayers.
Member Ayers has indicated she would not be present this evening.
House Member Benson. House Member Casada Lopez. House Member Leland. Councilmember McAllister.
Present.
Councilmember Spivey.
Present.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Council President Protim Sheffield.
Present.
Council President Jones.
Present.
Madam President, you have Korn present.
Thank you having a Korn present. Council will be in session. And I would like to just say to everyone, you should have received a public comment card if you want to make a public comment. If you did not receive a card, if you raise your hand, someone from my staff will bring you a card for you to make a public comment. I would like to thank the Salvation Army for giving us the opportunity to have our meeting right here in the community on Connor, in this district. Thank you, Member Spivey, as well. And I would like to invite the Lieutenant up to do our invocation for today.
All right, let me, I apologize, let me turn around. I'd like to see you guys. All right, well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Lieutenant Henry Boatton. I'm a corps officer here, the pastor at the Salvation Army here on Connor. I'd like to welcome all you guys here. Let me pray with you guys before we get started. Dear Heavenly Father, we just want to thank you this evening, Lord. I just, we just come to you, Lord, and just ask for wisdom and guidance. I just pray and ask that you just be over this meeting. I just pray and ask you to just be with our leaders today.
Yes.
Give them the words to say, Lord. Let this meeting be a meeting that honors you. Let us be a people that honor you. We just want to thank you, Lord, for all you do. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen, amen.
So, like I said, I want to welcome all you guys here to the Salvation Army of Connor Creek. Just a quick, quick, quick tidbit, at this meeting, just a quick thing. We are in our kettle season. Please, please, please don't walk past a red bucket without giving. Everything helps, everything. A quarter helps, a dime helps, a dollar helps, a hundred-dollar bill helps. Everything helps, so please, please give to the Salvation Army. Everything you give stays in the community. Nothing goes out. What you give to Connor stays in the east side of Detroit and Gross Point. We serve those areas. So, everything stays right here. It doesn't get dispersed anywhere else. It goes right here to the community. And it helps with our after-school programming, it helps with our senior luncheon, it helps with everything we do on the east side. So, please, please give.
Thank you again so very much, Lieutenant, and again, thank you for allowing us to use your space and your electricity. Thank you for letting us be here. We have great lights and heat. So, I am now going to do the recognition of our department representatives as well as the city council staff. So, if my staff can raise your hand or stand up. Council President Pro- Council President Protim Mary Sheffield's staff. Councilmember Janey Ayers' staff. Councilmember Scott Benson's staff. Councilmember Raquel Casanata Lopez's staff. Councilmember Gabe Leland's staff. Councilmember Andre Spivey, your district staff, council member's staff. Councilmember James Tate's staff. Councilmember Roy McAllister Jr.'s staff. Our Legislative Policy Division's staff. So, now I'm going to turn the floor over for remarks by my, as well as your District Four, Councilmember Andre Spivey.
Good evening, Madam President. Thank you all for being here in District Four, to my colleagues, to our residents who are here, and those who work for the city of Detroit. Thank you for all of our vendors who are here in DTE for your support before the meeting. My staff stand once again. Q. Jones, my chief of staff. We have our two community liaisons here, Keisha McKenney, Bradley Merrill, and Delaney Williams, our office manager. Eric King is now here, our policy analyst. And then a group did not stand who we work with all the time. I think some of the greatest NPOs in the city. Can they stand there, my far-left way in the back, all of our NPOs from, I think, Precinct Five, Precinct Nine, and they, nine and five. Precinct Nine and Five, thank you all for all the hard work that you do. We've had some long meetings the last couple of days, and so we don't want to keep you too long tonight. But D4, just for you tonight, just some announcements of dates coming up within the next month or so to put on your calendar. Again, you can go through all these dates on DetroitD4.com, our website, or download our app, Councilman Spivey, or DetroitD4 on Android or iTunes. This coming Thursday, we'll be right back at this location for our annual Thanksgiving dinner at 6:30 PM until 8:00. So, come out this Thursday for that celebration. On the 10th of December, we'll be at the Samaritan Center, the Kilpatrick Room, from 10:00 until 1:00, December 10th, for our annual D4 Pancake Breakfast. We'll have free shuttle service from all of our D4 senior citizens complexes. On the next day, the 11th, we have two planning programs in our district. One, Gracious Seven, and the other, East Warren Casual. On December 11th, on Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00, the East Warren Casual Neighborhood Planning Meeting will take place at the Ronald Brown Academy on East Out of Drive. On the very next day, we'll be at the Matrix Center at 6:00 PM, Gracious Seven Meeting on East McNichols. And that same, I believe, is the mayor's District Four meeting at 7:00, right down the road of Jameson Temple. So, we have a lot going on the next few weeks or so, so please come out. Again, all these dates are on our District Four website, DetroitD4.com, or on our app, or you can call our office if you need additional information. That is all I have tonight. We're looking forward to hearing from you tonight. Again, welcome to D4, and be safe this holiday season, and God bless you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spivey, again. If you would like to make public comments and you did not receive a public comment card, please raise your hand, and someone from my staff will bring you a public comment card, as I will be cutting public comment cards off very soon. And let me just say, there are many meetings that are going on as we are in this meeting right now, and we know that the Charter Commission are having their meeting down at the Coleman and Young Municipal Center, and the mayor is also having his District Seven, District Seven, meeting over at Third New Hope, as we are here as well this evening. So, there has been, and there are a lot of meetings today. So, thank you all for being here. We have citizens that have called ahead and requested additional public comment time. Those citizens will receive four minutes for public comments, and they are listed on your agenda. So, I am going to begin with Bethany Howard, who's comments will be regarding FCA Impact Area Student Survey.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bethany Howard. This is Katie Carlisle. We are graduate students at University of Detroit Mercy, and we are conducting a community needs assessment for the FCA impact area. So, that is zip codes 48213, 48214, and 48215. So, we are conducting a survey, and we would like, if you live in the 48213, 48214, and 48215 zip codes, if you would be so kind, once this meeting is over, to meet with us to take the survey.
So, our focus is looking at the impact of asthma and, oh, sorry. So, our focus is looking at asthma in the FCA impact zone. So, we're a community development student, so learning how to do community development. This is part of our human development class. It's kind of our big project for the whole semester.
So, we'll be standing here after the meeting's over, and like I said, if you'd be so kind, we really, really, really need your help, because we want to get an A on our project. And if you would just help us with that survey, we'll give you some peppermints or something.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Ted Tansley, Vision Zero Traffic Mitigation Strategy.
Hi.
Hello.
Can you hear me all? All right. So, I'm Ted Tansley. I live in District Four, and I have a prepared statement on this, but I'm here today to ask the council to adopt the Vision Zero. And what that is, is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while also increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all Detroiters. So, you might be wondering, how big of a problem is this? Who's impacted most by this? And so, I was able to get SEMCOG crash data report on this, and in the last 10 years, Detroit has had 972 deaths and 4,033 severe injuries as a result of these crashes. More than 60% of those deaths are from pedestrians and bicyclists being killed by a motor vehicle. So, motor vehicle crashes are the leading cause of death for children and adolescents. Firearms, firearm deaths are second to that. A 2011 study has showed that low-income individuals and African-American children, each are twice as likely to be killed while walking. So, that was all the bad news. The good news is, is this is entirely preventable. There are known methods to adjust the ways our streets are designed to deal with this, and we can do this together. We just need your leadership to engage with us so that we can do this. And the city has done some things to give credit to address these, to address this issue. Things like creating protected bicycle infrastructure, and even the controversial closing of Woodward on Larned and Jefferson between those areas. That has helped. And, but it's not enough. I mean, these deaths are totally preventable. What we need to do is develop a strategy. It's imperative to do that if we ever expect to significantly reduce traffic fatalities and injuries while unlocking the city's potential to rebuild with everybody in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ida Bird Hill, Community Concern, and I am going to close public comment cards.
I just want to ask, how many people have been in a factory in the last year or so? Have actually walked into a factory? Not a lot of people. Well, the reason why I ask that question, because right across the street is Fiat Chrysler Automotive. And if you've never been in a factory in the last couple of years, they're what we call robotic wonders. It used to be that a factory was dirty, and it had lots of people in it screwing on widgets. That day has long passed us. It is a robotic wonder. The reason why I say that, because in 2014, the actual robotic manufacturer for this FCA became a sponsor of my nonprofit, Kamau. And they had what I call the most heavy-duty robotics you have ever seen. It used to be you could go into a body paint shop and employ 500 people. Now, a robot does the work of 500 people, and they only need five bodies. That's how we're living right now. That plant, the new plant that's coming, is going to introduce the new body welding plant, which means that it can take one car, they used to have 100 people doing different parts of the car welding, and weld them all simultaneously at one time. They only need three people to operate that robot. So, when I became a sponsor, I decided that we needed to have a real conversation of this city about the impact of automation on our city. See, a lot of the job loss that we say that we had, we blamed it on the recession, but what no one tells you is that the automotive industry employs 60% of the people in America, and they are leading the charge for automation, because it makes them more profitable. The problem is, is that as they automate, many of us are not getting the skills that are necessary to be able to occupy those jobs. Now, I hear people say all the time, where have the good jobs gone? They're here. Right now, they predict we have 32,000 jobs that are open right in the city of Detroit, but most of them are technological jobs. They require brain power and technology. But we are afraid to do technology, and I don't understand why, because how many people left home without their phone today? Not a soul left home without a phone. But guess what? That phone is a mini-computer. It used to be a day that you could fill up a whole room like this with a mainframe. That power is in your phone. So, the reason why I'm here, because I would need people to start looking at, where are we going for not only adults today, but where are we leading our children? Because at the end of the day, we're gonna have to embrace automation. Now, I believe in it so strongly that I suspended my nonprofit, and a couple of years ago did a pilot for free classes with Cisco Networking Academy. And I have to give Cisco a hand, because they gave us money, they gave us a senior vice president out of California to make that happen. But I'm gonna tell you what disappointed me. I gave away those classes that normally run 10,000 a body for free, and I really expected about 5,000 people to sign up, because I gave them away for free. All you got to do is show up, instructors, what have you. I actually had about 800 people show up, but that's not the same as 5,000 for free. I need this community, particularly since you've got a new plant that's coming, to really have some conversation amongst not only the children, but adults who are struggling financially, to look at automation as a career and to really embrace it. We now run a post-secondary institution, because we felt strongly about the whole issue, that we're helping people get educated. But what I need people to do is not to be afraid of it, to trust that there are people in this community who want to get you into technology and to access those jobs. Now, you go, why is that so important? Right now, there are 1.8 million cybersecurity jobs that are open. Those jobs have a median salary of $92,000. Am I done? Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I am going to ask Ms. Vicki Kovari if she will come forward to talk about Census 2020.
Thank you, Council President Jones and other members of the council. I just want to take this opportunity to tell District Four residents about the 2020 Census, what it is, when it starts, why it matters, and what the city is trying to do to make it successful. So, number one, the census is for everyone, right? It doesn't matter if you're living in a group home, it doesn't matter what your immigration status is, it doesn't matter what your age is. The census is to be filled out by everyone who's eating and sleeping in the city of Detroit as of April 1st. So, it's for everybody. It starts in March, and it goes through July. So, just remember that. Everybody in a household is counted. Number two, the census matters. You might want to ask yourself, why should I fill out this form? You know, I'm afraid that, you know, maybe they're gonna use the information against me, or it doesn't really matter. So, the census matters. Anybody who knows anybody or themselves receives Medicaid, WIC, has a bridge card, benefits by special education, has kids or knows kids, they get free school lunches, all of those programs are dependent on the census count, at least in part. Even student loans are in part dependent on the census count. So, the less people we count, the less federal money comes into the city for these programs. In addition, the census count determines how much political representation we have. So, Detroit is at risk of losing another congressional seat, right? We've already lost four since 1970. So, it's really important that we count everybody so that we can maintain our political representation. I'll be talking to this side now, too. All right. But more than that, one of the things I, I'm so passionate about the census is because I've lived in Detroit my whole life, right? I feel a loyalty to the city of Detroit. I want everyone to feel like they belong to the city of Detroit and be counted as a Detroit-er, right? We've got a lot of young people living in downtown or midtown or wherever who use their parents' address. Maybe some people in this room use another address in the suburbs because of car insurance and taxes, right? All right, we get that. But whatever is on your license doesn't matter. The Census Bureau doesn't care what's on your license. It just cares where you're living, where you're eating and sleeping, and that's where you're counted. This information is confidential. It's not shared by anybody. The census supersedes the Patriot Act, so it can't be shared with Homeland Security or FBI or CIA or any company or individual. Census information that ties you, your name, to that address cannot be released for 72 years. So, the last census information that was released was 1940, right? I saw my grandfather's handwriting, when he lived in Glassport, Pennsylvania. So, 72 years from now, where most of us are not gonna be around, it's our kids, our grandkids, our great-grandkids that are gonna want to know where Grandma or Auntie lived, right, in the city of Detroit. And it's important that we give them that kind of legacy. Finally, the census form is easy. It's nine questions, right? It doesn't ask about income. Some of you might have filled out those really long forms of the census. That's not what this census is. It asks age, how many people in your household, and your gender, your marital status, if you rent or own. The thing that's important, the census is only required to count how many people are in a household. So, if you don't fill out any other question but how many people are in your household, the form is still good, right? You don't have to answer anything else if you don't want to. So, the Census Bureau, if you haven't answered any form, they will come knocking on your door in May. So, it starts in March. This is gonna be the first online census in the history of the U.S. But we found out actually last night that in the city of Detroit, 86% of all the homes in the city of Detroit will actually get a paper form mailed to them. So, you don't have to fill it out online. You can fill it out by paper, you can call on the phone and fill it out, or you can fill it out on the Internet. All right. So, finally, what is the city of Detroit doing about the census? So, I want to, I want to just talk a tiny bit about the outreach. We've recruited 120 neighborhood leaders to be census captains. It covers every single census tract in the city of Detroit. We're paying census captain $200 a month in a gift card to help us work their neighborhood, go to local businesses, go to churches, help make sure that people sign up for the census. We also just finished canvassing. We hired 12 community groups, some in this area like Mac Development and Morningside, were hired to go knock on, and they knocked on 130,000 doors in the city of Detroit, to ask people, did they know about the census, were they gonna complete it, were they gonna fill it out, and what barriers there might be to filling it out. So, 130,000 doors, we got census information out. We're setting up 120 census assistance centers all over the city where people can go to a computer and fill it out or get information about what the census is and how to fill it out. So, those are just some of the things. We're gonna be doing Census Sundays in 100 churches in Detroit. So, we're really trying to make this a unifying effort in the whole city. So, whatever you feel, whatever your political persuasion is, we want to make sure everyone in the city of Detroit is counted. So, those are just some of the things that we're doing in the city of Detroit to make sure that we count everyone, and we need your help. We need you to tell your family and your friends and your neighbors the same thing, why the census matters, why they should fill it out, and help them. Help them fill it out, right? Because in 2010, we had 220,000 people in households that did not fill out a census form. 220,000 people, right? That doesn't mean they weren't counted, but when you don't fill out that form yourselves, the Census Bureau basically estimates your information, right? So, we can't let that happen again. We've got to make sure we count everybody. So, that's basically it. Thank you, Council President Jones, other members of the council for this opportunity to talk a little bit about the census. Thank you, everyone here.
Thank you so very much for that information. I let her stress it as long as she needed to, because it is so important that people fill out their census form. It is so much dependent on federal dollars that we receive in this city. The census has a lot to do with dollars that we receive in this city. So, when you talk about education and money that we're receiving for education, I mean, it's just so many things that lies upon how we are counted in the city of Detroit in the census. So, please, make sure that everyone you know participate in that census. Thank you. Okay. I am going to move to general public comment cards, and each person will have two minutes. I am gonna call upon Angela Wilson, Nadine Wakefield, and Jay Henderson.
Good evening, councilmembers. I want to thank you for being here in our community. I live actually in D5, but I work down the street in D4, and I work throughout the community with a lot of neighborhood organizations. When I came, I didn't have an intention to speak, but when they gave me the opportunity at the door, I just wanted to say thank you to the councilmembers and appearance that you all are here, that I need to thank for voting to not move the mayor's light bond proposal forward as it came to you. I appreciate the time that you took to consider it, all the interactions that you had with community leadership and with yourselves and your community about what that proposal meant or what it could mean or might not mean to citizens. And I just wanted to have, since I had the chance, I wanted to say thank you for the way you voted.
Thank you. If the clerk can note, we've been joined by Councilmember Leland.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify, I think there's a story that Channel 7 posted that said I voted in favor of the bond demolition. Channel 7, I would ask you to please make that correction. I voted against the proposal. So, just wanted to make sure Detroit News got it, Free Press got it right, but unfortunately, Channel 7 made a mistake. So, just wanted to make sure that that was correct for the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Raquel. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nadine Wakefield. I am Vice President of the Village of Parkside, and plus, okay. My name is Nadine Wakefield, Vice President of the Village of Parkside. We are asking people to give back to communities and stuff like, where we have to ask different places for help, and we trying to find people to help out with that. And another thing, could they please keep the lights on? Because some people wear glasses, sometimes look like they can't see out of their glasses and stuff like that. I have to be the other eye to look out and watch out for them, because they can't see through the dark. Because I'm gonna tell you what happened sometime back when the lights wasn't on, and it was off, we drove through there, and we didn't see this person, and it was kind of dark, no lights, but it was all dark clothes, and they needed to see, have some light to where we could see them, some white or something, because we actually hit them. We hit them with the car, and then we got out. They wasn't hurt. They hit the car, and I was ready to jump out and tell them, "You better put on something with a little white, so I could see you." And my boyfriend, "No, no, 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 no." Okay. But that's all I had to say. My prayer's to Detroit and for the rest of y'all, and thank everybody for having back, helping out, for giving back to Detroit.
Thank you. Following Jay Henderson will be Vanita Tompkins, Brenda Butler, and Alina Harada.
Okay. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I want to thank you for your support today in defeating the mayor's proposal for the $250 million. But those of us in this game knows that it's gonna come back again, so we hope all of you stay the course and do not change your mind. Having said that, I want to talk about the most dangerous thing in Detroit, and that's the bike lanes. The bike lanes on East Warren and on Jefferson are tragic situation. When you get out of your car on East Warren, if you get out on the passenger side, you get hit by a bike. If you get out on the driver's side, you get hit by a car. And I've seen both, so I'm sure some of you have gotten the same information. As a matter of fact, a friend of mine who has an Escalade got his mirrors knocked off, and you said, "Well, what the heck? Go to your insurance." Was that $1,100 in the insurance only? Most people have $1,000 deductible. So, I'm sure Councilman Spivey did a survey on the bikes, and it was said that we did not want the bikes on the east side. So, in a democracy, if we say we don't want it, why doesn't it disappear? That's my question. Can anybody give me an answer to that?
So, I'm going to motion to council- So I'm going to motion to Councilmember Spivey, and then I will come in and comment as well.
Brother Jay Henderson, good to see you, sir. Earlier tonight, I gave some dates. I think it's very advantageous that we all show up at that December 11th Warren Casual Neighborhood Meeting, and express the concern that bike lanes are not desirable, desired in this community. I can tell you, I think I saw two all summer going down East Warren Avenue. We did do a survey, came back overwhelmingly that people did not want them. And so if you could gather all your suburban folk in District 4, come out on 11th, to let the Plane Department know how we feel about bike lanes in District 4, and make that happen. But I appreciate your concern, Jay. We do have Ron Brunnich, who's a District 4 resident, who runs DPW in our community, and Brad Dick, who works for General Services, who lives in District 4. And so we express our concerns to them, and please come out that meeting and express your concerns to administration as well on that night, okay, Jay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me start off by saying I visited bike lanes a long time ago. And when they first came to Detroit, probably two, maybe three years ago, I was driving down Livin' Noise, and it was a pilot. It was raining, it was a Saturday. I'd just left the Oakman Fire Station, they were doing a giveaway. I was driving down Livin' Noise, and I said to myself, "This is an accident waiting to happen." I went to my other home over there, I now live in District 4 as well, and I'm driving down Livin' Noise, and guess what? I was in, it wasn't a fender bender, but it was a little encounter with another car. I seen it coming, I talked to the administration, I was informed that that was a pilot. I have been around this city long enough to know that if it's a pilot, it's going to end up happening, it's going to be here to stay. We have visited, we had meetings with, joint meeting with AARP, and they talked about bike lanes in other municipalities and other states. I also have visited other states that have bike lanes, but I think more studying, went into the bike lanes in the other states and in the other municipalities. I tell everybody Detroit is a different apple on its own, and Detroit cannot do everything that everybody else does, because we're different. I am First Vice President of Semcock. We have taken as the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. We have taken many surveys on bike lanes, and bike lanes work in some of the communities, but other communities, they do not work. I have talked to the administration and wanted to implement an ordinance with bike lanes and with them coming before council, when they were going to put the bike lanes out. And they said that would not happen, that the Law Department clearly stated to us that it is against the law for us to do that type of ordinance, because we cannot dictate to the administration where to put bike lanes. My had a different opinion, because council votes on whether or not traffic lights are removed, and to me, it was basically the same thing. And so we're still dealing with that situation on whether or not it should be something that comes before council. My other concern is that there was no education with bike lanes. They just put them there, and they were there. And you do what you do to learn how to drive where there is a bike lane. There have been some locations where they removed bike lanes off of one side of the street, because it was a hazard, but they have not removed them from every place they need to remove them from, because it could possibly be a hazard. So I continue to engage in the subject of bike lanes around the city of Detroit with the administration, and will continue. So thank you for that concern. I do have one more councilmember who wants to comment, but if you want to wait until he finishes and then comment on what we all say.
Brother Henderson, I also did a survey in my district, which is District 2. I borrowed your district councilmember, member Spivey, and I kind of catered it to my specific district. And I did a three, three and a half month survey, and sent surveys out to the people. I borrowed it back, and I also took it to the administration, and I spoke with them about how the people in District 2 really do not want the bike lanes. And I also asked if a person, and I mean, it was told to me, well, you know, they will eventually adapt and get used to it. And my other question to them was, okay, if you have a strong group, or a strong community that is saying they do not want it, what is the process in having bike lanes removed? And again, I was advised, well, they'll get in and get used to it. Well, I'm hoping that since the Director of Planning, the old Director of Planning has left, the gatherings that member Spivey has talked about, and we have some more throughout the city, and it's because of you folks who we serve and represent, when your voices start saying, somebody's going to have to start playing. So the fact of the matter is, is that you coming together and then start putting out that voice more, because we are saying it. But a lot of times, when that number is big and large, then they begin to hear. So I just wanted to say that also. So we are working on that, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say one other thing, that is, the people who seem to ride the bikes on Jefferson come from Girls Point, but there are no bike lanes in Girls Point. So consequently, there's, I have a problem, well, I'm probably the only one that has a problem with that, but I have a problem with that. If they're so great, don't stop at Austin, go all the way down to St. Clair Shores, because when you see them coming in, it's about 20 or 30 of them, and they're riding the bikes. Well, that's great, but they're riding in Iowa City. I said we should make, we should tax them when they cross off the road. But that's just me speaking. But having said that, I don't want to use up all of my time. I have one other situation. DTE was here earlier, and they have an implosion that's going to come up, Brother Spivey, and the environmental impact of that I'm concerned with. Because when you blow that building up, the debris is going to go everywhere. So the question is, I see they all left, is how they plan to contain that, and how do they plan to make us whole in that area? Are they going to wash all of our cars? Are they going to wash the houses down?
You can go to the mayor's meeting on December 12th. We don't have that information. He's December 12th, the implosion is technically set for the 13th, and they can answer all those questions for. We don't have that information right here. Thank you, Brother Jay.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe there was a meeting, and I don't have the exact date, that is scheduled to be at...
Tomorrow night, Eastlake.
Eastlake?
Tomorrow night, Eastlake.
Okay, okay.
Well, they've got one tomorrow night, but Brother Spivey, I know you'll support me there, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Vanita Tompkins?
Good afternoon, Vanita Tompkins. I sent a letter to council to test the effectiveness for your emailing system for the public comment. One was placed the 29th of October, and a hard copy was sent to everybody's mail, and also to reserve for this meeting. And just in case it didn't make it to record, I want to quickly read it. Virginia Park residents and Vanita Tompkins opposed to the Herman Kiefer Farm and Tree Nursery proposed planning of 4,000 to 8,000, eight acres, five-year contract with wholesale trees, Keith Anderson from Oxford, Michigan, for commercial profit and Ryan Costellano Herman Kiefer LLC. There is no residential benefit for Virginia Park District, no monies, no plants, et cetera. Also, the city of Detroit, through the maintenance contract and purchasing Herman Kiefer through approval, Brownfield Development, NEZ, et cetera, gave all the vacant lots in that vicinity to the developer. Now the developer is changing over the property to a third party, which is the Tree Nursery, as an alternative strategy to the maintenance contract. Why do residents have to be subjected and intimidated with trees and wildlife? There is other property in the 7.2 area that can also be considered for the urban tree experiment, or, as mentioned, pilots. And we know things come to be pilots, as just mentioned, pilot programs end up staying. Building and Safety had a hearing October 16th in Room 401. It was listed in the knowledge that the demonstrative or pilot trees that have been placed next to residents' homes on Lee Place and Pingree has not received approval, so is out of compliance. And that's through the B.C. Department with City of Detroit. It was a 30-day comment of when the decision would come. Just to follow up, my time is up. I just want to make note that the 30 days was up on the 15th correction, this past Friday. And as mentioned in the contract, if the liaison fails to provide any approval, and liaison meaning the city of Detroit, in the maintenance contract, approval or written statement setting forth the reasons the liaison refuses to furnish any approval within 30 days, which was this past Friday, following the receipt of the submittal of the proposal, which was October 16th, to the zoning board, the approval shall be deemed granted. And we do not want the residents to have the technicality, because B.C., zoning, if it lies in city council, whatever department it lies in, the technicality to overlook that the residents of Virginia Park, we oppose. We don't want 8,000 trees. And if anybody agree with it, let the trees come to your neighborhood.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I am going to ask the clerk if you will refer that to Public Health and Safety, and probably, because you said there is, in the development agreement, I have not had an opportunity to look at it, also to...
Exhibit D?
Hold on for a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Also to the planning and economic development, because all of that went through planning and economic development, so that we will have an opportunity to visit it, to see exactly what's going on. So if you sent it to all of us in our email, we have it. It has been, I have just referred it to two committees to investigate what's going on, and we will respond to you. I'm sure your email address is there via email, and if you want to send your phone number, send your phone number to us as well.
Solid record.
Okay. Thank you again. Member McAllister?
When is your community meeting? What day, and what time, and location?
Well, the last one we had was the, community meeting was the 14th. It's just passed.
When is your next one, ma'am?
It'll be the second week. We can arrange one, what's convenient for you.
Okay, then. I have...
December the 5th.
I have one of my staff members get the information from you, and then we'll follow up later on.
She sent it to everybody's email. And everybody has a hard copy per your reception area. We'll follow up with you. Thank you, Connie. I appreciate your comment.
Brenda Butler?
Good evening, city councilmembers.
Good evening.
Brenda Butler here, coal miner's daughter, Birmingham, Alabama, currently living in District 4, Chandler Park. I am also a member of the Advisory Council, member of the blight elimination standards at the nonprofit organization, East Side Community Network. Thank you, thank you, thank you, six times, for the no vote demolition, blight elimination, 200-mil bond initiative. At ECN, our blight elimination standards for the city of Detroit were approved by this council, and again, we thank you. We will be submitting to this council and the administration a statement regarding future elimination standards for our beloved city. Let me please say a million times, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of my and our neighbors across this city. We are so proud of what we do in the city of Detroit. To the world, we say. In Detroit, Michigan, our neighbors, communities throughout this city have been the best stewards in maintaining the land, the land care, and the boardups in our neighborhoods with heartfelt pride. I repeat, with heartfelt pride. One more thing, please. The administration has failed us. Therefore, we request that all citizens in this city wake up tomorrow morning, and every morning, and just take a look around in your neighborhoods, and be proud of the work that we do with the outside equipment, outdoor equipment, that we share with each other to maintain our well-manicured lawns in our neighborhoods. And then ask yourself, wow, we did not create this blight. This blight was caused by banks, mortgage companies, city government administration, and landscaping contractors that was hired by this administration, and DTE Energy with their failure to trim our trees around the light poles. Thank you. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. The last card I have is Ms. Alina Harada.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
And of course, thank you, and 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 thank you. We will see you again next Tuesday, just to be sure we can thank you again. I'm here on behalf of a particular area. Hello, Raquel. Thank you especially, I knew you didn't do that. I'm looking at 1601 Clark, the former YMCA, and it's been abandoned for many years. It's been blighted for, I want to say 20 years, I think about 20 years, at least. And an owner, Dennis Cephalinos, has purchased several other properties, such as the school at Trumbull in I-75, the old Franklin Adult Education Center, and Nicky's in Greettown, the loft at Lafayette in Trumbull, several big properties he owns, and now owns El Socorro Restaurant, and has reopened it for business. But that building on Clark Street remains blighted, and the reason I think this is a problem, number one, for the council and for all involved, developers should not be able to continue to purchase properties when they have them blighted like that, and then decide what they're going to, they can sell margaritas two for five over there and leave Clark Park and three schools to face this once anchor of the community? So Cephalinos has been allowed to do this with impunity, while other people, if you don't paint your porch, you get a blight ticket. So we're asking that he be called to account. We don't want that building torn down. That building was truly an anchor of the community for many, many years, and it was continuing to be, even at the moment it was closed. And so there's been constant problems with it. My time is up, but I'm asking you to look into Cephalinos' property and make changes on the developers, so that they have to develop what they're going to do before they can get other properties. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to refer that location to Public Health and Safety as well, to look at the blight issues around that particular property. So if you can refer that location to Public Health and Safety. That is all of the cards that I have for this evening, and so I would first like to just take an opportunity to thank all of the citizens who have hung in with city council during these trying, long hours. Last night, we were at a meeting to, I want to say 9:00 PM, and my colleagues remained at that meeting, along with the citizens, in a meeting that we decided to call, because it was, we felt necessary to give all of the information and to hear all of the comments from the citizens. and to hear all of the comments from the citizens. So I want to take the opportunity to publicly thank all of the citizens who came out as well as my colleagues because many of them began working and committee at 10:00 AM. And so it was an extremely long day for my colleagues. I want to also take the opportunity to thank our media services who have been there also televising and taping the sessions as we have been in sessions for those who were not able to make it. So I'm going to take the opportunity to thank media services. I also want to take the opportunity to thank our EPU unit who was there then and still hanging out with us tonight to ensure the safety of all the citizens as well as the council members. And then I want to take an opportunity to thank all of the staff members who were there with their council members as well as the citizens who were there. As we talked about, an issue that was so important to the citizens, we had a packed auditorium where the fire marshal would not let anyone back into the, let anyone into the building to attend that meeting because there were no seating. So that's how important the issue was on both sides. It was a very passionate meeting to many individuals on both sides. And I want to thank those who continue to keep decorum because sometimes it's awfully hard to keep decorum when something is that passionate to you. But it's very important as we are trying to host a meeting to myself and to my colleagues that decorum and respect is there on both sides of the table. And I say, I try to respect all citizens at all times. And I ask all citizens to respect me as well as my colleagues and the work that we do. We will not always agree. Sometimes we don't agree with ourselves. Sometimes we ask ourselves, huh, why did I do that? And if you ask yourself a question on something that you don't agree with that you've done yourself, of course, nine council members along with the mayor are not always going to agree. But it is important that we always respect each other in what we do. So I want to again just publicly thank everyone who participated in these long weeks of making a decision on a ballot initiative to go on the ballot, which we made today. There will be some decisions that you, that council members will make that you will not agree with. There will be other decisions that council members make that you will agree with. What I say to everyone is whether you agree or whether or not you disagree, talk to that council member and give them an opportunity to explain themselves on why they made the decision that they made. And maybe sometimes you'll understand why they made that decision. Maybe you won't, but give them that benefit to be able to explain to you why they made that decision. Again, thank everyone, including the fire department because I did not mention them and I meant to mention them. Thanks to fire department as well because they ensured the safety. Although people wanted to get in, they had to make sure that if something happened, we were not traveling over each other. And they had to follow the laws of the fire marshals. So thank everyone who participated these long weeks. I want to thank also our Legislative Policy Division as well as the administration because this was not easy for anyone. It was not easy for anyone. So I just wanted to publicly thank everyone who participated and who did their share, the community. We love you. We thank you. We appreciate you, whether or not you agree with us or disagree with us on the decisions that we make. You are all still Detroiters and you are all still taxpayers. And so we appreciate you being Detroiters and taxpayers in the city of Detroit. If there are any comments from my colleagues? If not, we have had very long nights and days. Thank you all for being here, this meeting. And I do want to acknowledge, and I see you're standing in the back, our District 4 neighborhood manager. Did you want to have any comments or anything? Thank you for the work that you do and this meeting will stand adjourned.